It's a call to order the Wednesday April 4th meeting of the City Council Ordinance Committee. Madam Chair, can you follow the roll?
Counselor King, Counselor Paul, Counselor DeBona,
President.
Counselor Harris, Counselor Hughes,
Here.
Counselor Mahoney, Counselor McCarthy,
President.
Counselor Condit, Judge Shaw.
President. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to be non-admissible. The matter for us this evening is Council Order 2018-037, the ordinance of many municipal hotels, five, chapter 508 gas stations, section 50820 self-service phone stations in sections 508, 030 sale approved. I'd like to just start by saying that the original ordinance at Edgonham hasn't a change in there that I was intending to make before Edgonham, and if folks have it in front of them or they recollect, it does say in here, "The sale of dairy products or other food products," and that should say "free package," and we'll make that amendment at the end of this meeting, should there be other amendments that are going to be made as well. Right, I'd like to call to the podium Andrew Sheehan, the Health Commissioner and Licensed Board Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Sheehan.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Really good.
Thank you for coming in tonight. So I wanted to call you up first to speak, because when I first introduced this, you and I had a sense of conversation, and you brought up some great points, such as the "free package" food items, because, you know, outside of that not having a "free package" label in there, it gets into food service, full food service with service certification, as well as additional licensing, which is not what the original intent of this legislation was. So you have recommended to go again "free package," which would require a common license, but not the full service certifications and health requirements for food safety. So could you just go into a little bit of detail about, you know, the points you had brought up earlier, to ensure that it's all free packaged items only, and what that means, and then also what that entails for your department to be involved in?
Well, I did notice in the ordinance that you want to come before the license board to get the license with the notifications, because I think that's where they would not necessarily be getting a CD or license from us. We have to classify it as a different type of license, because a CD license means that they're actually eating it on-site. So that would not be it, but it would be still retail food, and it's all only prepackaged items. We don't want to get into anything that has the rolling machines, where you can put the hot dogs or the egg rolls or anything like that on there, the hamburger rolls that you can put on. We wouldn't want to get into anything like that. And I do have concerns as far as who would be allowed to do it. We have about 40 gas stations in the city. We probably, I'd probably get a call three or four times a year on a gas station that is now selling food, and when I go to the gas station, it's usually they'll have candy and gum and, you know, a soda machine, and instead of this coin operator, it's just the door open, company, those ordinance for the city-states, if you want any type of retail food in a gas station, it has to come out of the vending machine. So some people will put in the tonic display case, where you just open up the case and grab a tonic, that's not our vending machine, that doesn't fall within the restrictions of the ordinance as it currently stands. Some of the other concerns I have is if a gas station also does automotive repair. So now we have a gas station that is changing oil, replacing mufflers, doing great jobs. If they're short staffed for that particular day and no one's there to cover the counter, we have a guy that's just been underneath the car with greasy hands, changing muffler, coming out to say, "Oh, you want to buy a couple of candy bars? Here you go." So I have concerns about whether or not we allow places that are doing actual auto repair to allow them to do this also. We probably have about five, I think you're one or two, we have six self-service stations in the city right now. These are the ones that I believe would be the most advantageous to be able to sell retail food. They don't do any type of auto body repair, they don't do any type of automotive repair, so it's not like they have any of that conflict with a chance of cross-contamination. You also have someone dedicated behind the line that's not coming off pumping gas on a regular basis. And I was speaking with the city clerk earlier, and another concern I have is if we allow retail food, hand-delivered packaged food, what if a retail barrel wine license becomes available? Are we going to allow a gas station to sell retail barrel wine? So those are some of the questions and concerns that I have for this coming forward. Again, I have no stake in the game. If the city council passes it, I'm more than happy to vote in force, and I vote right in force, we are right now, as it is right now as it is. I do have one gas station in the city that is currently selling candy and gum and bags of dairy chips and coke out of an open door, not a coin operator dispensary. I was just waiting, I've been down there, I've already spoken to them. I did this, I believe it was four years ago, when this ordinance came before the council back then and rejected, so I just wanted to, before I went in and told them to get rid of everything, I wanted to see what happened here, and then I'll meet my, do what I have to do after that. We do on a regular basis get calls, as you'll find out, there are gas station attendants and people here that would come up and say, "Hey, I can't sell food, this place down there rules." So they kind of police each other, and that's how I find out about it, because I just don't have the manpower or the time to go out and constantly check gas stations to see if they're selling food.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for you, but I'll defer to my fellow colleagues first. Counselor Hughes?
Thank you very much. Sorry this is the beginning, but I remember this when this came up four years ago, we had the same discussions, and I've talked to several people about this. So do we have a lot of requests from sort of those larger gas stations wanting to come in, like the mobile marks and all that?
No, we don't have a lot, but I do on occasion get a call to see about whether or not we can sell food in a gas station.
So when you say that, is that like more like some of the folks?
Just existing.
Okay, all right. So not like a large Speedway calling and saying, you know, "Order the Stop and Shop one," or "The DJ's one," or that, okay, not that?
But when the Speedway changed hands down at North Quincy,
Where the Hes used to be, right.
Once a new general manager comes in,
They want to do it.
They go to that location, they walk in there, and the first thing they say is, "Where's the food? How come you guys aren't selling?"
Yeah.
And then I get the call from them, and I say, "It's the city ordinance."
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, did you also, did you also give your opinion as to whether you think this is the right thing to do as a health inspector?
If it's done properly, it can be done fine. It's all, as long as it's done properly, where there's not a chance of cross-contamination. That's why I'm hesitant to allow places that also do auto repair,
Right.
Mufflers, transmissions, oil changes. I just worry about the storage of food, how much space these facilities currently have to store the product that they're going to be putting under the shelves. They can't store it in a bathroom where it's not clean, sanitary, with wash over the walls. They can't, they just can't be storing it there, because there's a chance it's going to be cross-contaminated with anything else that's back there. And where gas stations have an awful lot of chemicals and oils and different hazardous materials, I just worry about that aspect of it.
And so how old is this ordinance?
I believe this ordinance goes back to the mid-'70s.
Okay. And why do you think this ordinance was passed in the '70s?
My opinion?
Yes.
I think my opinion was that mobile on-the-runs and those types of facilities were starting to get popular in the '70s. They looked to come to Quincy, and convenience stores got a hold of their ward councils and said, "This will put us out of business."
Right.
So that's why I believe it's passed.
Gotcha. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Counselor Ronan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Drew, thanks for coming by tonight and talking a little bit about this. Is this going to be more of just a packaged food? Is there any open food that's going to be? So it just has, it has to be packaged and...
Yeah, packaged, retail food.
Okay, so no open really?
Not going to be able to go in there and grab a coffee and a donut out of the case or anything like that, it's all prepackaged.
All prepackaged. Now, that also goes for soft drinks, there's not going to be a fountain where you could
No, all prepackaged.
Get a Slurpee or whatever you call those things, none of that, okay. Let me ask you this a step further. You go into other towns and cities, and as you get off the highway, you're looking at these little mobile marks, and then they have like the Dunkin' Donuts or Honeydew Donuts inside the place. Would this be ever a conversion where these Dunkin' Donuts and Honeydew Donuts can do it inside of the store? Does that have anything to do with this?
It depends upon how you gentlemen or ladies pass the ordinance, if it is passed. Currently, the way that I would look at it is, no, it would not be allowed to move in, because that's not retail food. That is, maybe that is a donut that is in a case that you have to take either a glove or a tissue,
Sure.
To grab it, to put it into a bag, and same thing if someone wanted to get an Egg McMuffin or an Egg and Cheese sandwich. Now, you have to actually prepare it on-site, so...
The only reason why I ask is when you do have those, and I frequently went into those, you know, snowplow and have to get out of the vehicle and go inside these stores, the only difference is it's a separate entity most of the time. So if it is a Dunkin' Donuts or a Honeydew Donuts, they actually have their own staff on duty, but they're not going to be doing the oil changes. They actually have the, you know, the uniform on, they work for that Honeydew or Dunkin' Donuts, whatever it is. So it's kind of like two separate entities. This has nothing to do with that, is that correct?
Correct.
And if this was a passage ordinance, does it have to, something like that to come in, they'd have to come back here and do this all over again? Is that basically how?
Next one with the ordinance, how the ordinance is written. If it's written where you allow it to go in, then they can do it.
Sure, sure.
That's up to the board, up to the council, how they want to handle it.
Because I know, I mean, we're here in 2018, but you know, 10, five or 10 years down the road, that might be a situation where people are going to want to come to an all-inclusive, "Hey, I'm going to come in, I need to get an Egg and Cheese sandwich and a coffee, I'm right off the highway, I gotta move," and they want those things. But I don't think we're there yet.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet, okay. I mean, when you talked about somebody doing an oil change or transmission and then coming in, they really, at some point, are they really going to be touching the plastic, you know, Twinkies or whatever it is?
So if you're a business owner, you own a garage, and you have three employees, and one of them is behind the line, because that's where the self-service gas station is, and now that person calls in sick, who's going to come then?
Sure.
You don't have it, but it's going to be a person that's underneath the gas, underneath the car or doing something with auto repair that is going to be coming in and, "I'm going to wash my hands real good, don't worry about it, I'll take care of it," but it's still going to happen. So that's my opinion.
And there's also, is it allowed to have like an ice cream setup? One of those things you go in and grab the ice cream, like the ice cream sandwiches and stuff like that?
If it's prepackaged.
If it's prepackaged?
If it's prepackaged, they could have an ice cream cooler.
Ice cream cooler, okay. Thank you for all your stuff, I have any more? After the Counselor McCarthy has any questions, I'll come back to you. Thank you, Drew. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Drew. Number of service stations in the city? I know you mentioned six self-serve.
Yes.
Any idea on how many we got citywide that is?
That are not self-serve? Probably have a lot, I have the list here, but some of these are just gas slash repair. Abbott's gas station is not here. Abbott's gas station doesn't have any gas, it got rid of it years ago, but they still have a gas license, because they store vehicles on the property that have gas in there, and they do repairs. So that would not count, but just looking at the list probably quickly, we probably have A1 batteries on here, A1 batteries down by the Florida of a bridge. They don't do any gas station activity at all, but they have gas repair, they have a gas license and a repair license, because they do that type of work. But again, that's not going to be one, it's going to be on here.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, you know, again, and Counselor Hughes brought up when this was put into place, which we had talked a little bit, this story, it was a while ago, and when you get into the verbiage about "no service station," I just want to make sure, I know there's folks in the crowd here that are self-serve, and that are regular service stations that would fall underneath the...
Probably about 15 or 20 that are probably just regular service stations,
Yeah.
Built from out. Mason's is one, Egan's is another.
Right, right. No, I see Egan represented out of the crowd. But in their case, in the service stations case, I mean, we could put something in the ordinance also that says that there'd be a dedicated, even though there's the calling sick and not show up, a dedicated person that's going to run, you know, their little shop,
Yep.
And stay away from the battery and the brake tune-ups and et cetera, the best we Both councils talked about sealed products, so there's no cooking, there's no anything out there that I don't think anybody, and I know that people are running around, they're busy doing automotive stuff, but at least there's sealed packages and they're protected somewhat. I wouldn't want to discriminate against the self-serve versus the served, and you know, it's been a long time, and I've talked to a few people that are looking to be able to do something in regards to this ordinance that Counselor Liang brought up, and I'm glad she did, because they also want to get in and make some revenue off of this. So I see everybody's point, I see your points too in regards to not letting it get out of control. I think we might want to take a look, and again, I refer back to Madam Chair, just about maybe some more language in the ordinance to make sure that we cover your concerns, the folks and the audience's concerns, and some of the language here that might not be there that we might need to take a quick look at to make sure we cover ourselves in regards to storage, clean storage, clean hands, a dedicated employee in regards to a service station, and then also whatever guidelines we need for self-service. So I think it's a good thing that they're able to, you know, broaden their business as long as it doesn't get, like you said, a little bit out of control. That's why I want to take, I'd ask us to take a look at this ordinance and add some more language in there, just to put some more constraints on things that you could be worried about, or the city that you're worried about down the road.
So to elaborate on your comment about, you know, their concern that they are taxpayers, they look to make as much money off of their property as they can,
Sure.
And I completely agree with that. That's why a lot of these gas stations have used car licenses, and a lot of them have used car licenses for one or two cars. And it's not because they want to be used car lot, it's that they have regular customers that come in, and if a car breaks down, or they're looking for a car for their son or their daughter, they want the mechanic that has always worked on their car to find them a car. The mechanic or the owner of the truck can't go up to the auction up at Quarry Hills unless they have a motor tool license. So we, I know you have talked about the ordinances for used car lots and things like that, but this is one of the things that has kind of brought a little bit out of control, and I know you're looking to pull back in on some of these car lots, and we have pulled back in on several of them, but that's another one of the catch-22s as far as that. And I get they want to maximize their profits, they're entitled to it, they all work very, very hard, so I never felt bad about offering or, you know, approving a used car license for one or two cars, because I knew it's not going to be a used car. It's just there because they want to be able to help their clients.
And maybe we need to take a look at those 15 to 20 plus the self- serves, and maybe a couple of the ones in there that I wouldn't think were on the list, but you made some great points, Drew, about, just to make sure we, a couple of the ones that probably would be the majority, but a couple of ones that should be able to move forward on this. But I'm good, thanks, Drew. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Drew, so to go back to the questions that I have for you, and I just want to, you know, point some of the points you made, your great points. So the first was that as it stands right now with the current ordinance, where you can sell things out of vending machines, but not the bridges, and you are seeing incidents where that is happening. I did put a fine in here for $50 for each violation if folks are selling things that aren't prepackaged, right? And that's sort of again similar to what's going on right now, there's a ordinance that dictates you can use it one way, there are violations to it. I guess there's two questions to this. The first is the fine itself, I just pulled it from the current licensing fee that if you do get a license to sell gas and there's any violation with that license, then you could fine $50 per violation. So that's what I'm matching over here, but in just to make sure that that is, you know, a good amount that we can retain that amount for this fine that ended up happening over here.
The fine is fine with me, because it wasn't the one that...
The second piece of that question is just keeping track of those offenders. If there are folks that are constantly, already as it is, you know, not following the ordinance as it's written, then I imagine there's going to be hesitation moving forward, that they're going to apply by the ordinance as it's written here. So is there any way, if and when this is passed, to keep track of the past offenders as well as offenders moving forward, so that if there is a reoccurring offender to this, that, you know, if they apply, we can point to that and say, "Well, you violated all of these ordinances in the past, and you don't have necessarily the tracker to put that." So is there a way that we can set that up?
I would be, it's very easy to keep track, it's not a big deal at all.
Great. And the second part was to be with sanitation, and, you know, Counselor McCarthy brought up a great point, where, you know, we can look at this language again and think about staff requirements that we can write in here, as well as two other pieces that I think we should look at as well. And first is the storage requirements, and you had talked about, you know, what kind of storage should have in your facility, and there are certain, you know, requirements, I know for full food establishments that you need to have for food safety purposes, and so that's something I would like to revisit with you as well, and look at, you know, what kind of storage requirements are going to be necessary for items. Even though it is prepackaged, you still do have food on site.
We still would only want food stored in its own separate area, we wouldn't want it mixed up with anything else.
Right. And then the last thing is for that piece, if they hand sanitize it, so again, thinking full food service, you do have to have a certain number of hand washing stations and sanitizing stations and the pre-basis and all of that, and that is going to be a language and laws when you go apply for a full food service license. And so if there is, you know, again, a sink requirement, a number of sink requirements depending on the square footage of the space, if that's something that I can work on, I would love to also...
If they want to serve food, there should be a hand wash sink in the facility.
Right, and add minimum depending on the square footage, if it's a larger, you know, footprint, then they may need two, and, you know, if it's small, then they may need one, but if you...
If it's all just prepackaged food, I think one hand wash sink would be sufficient.
That's all I have for you, right, and Counselors, do you have any other questions for Mr. Sheehan? Counselor Ronan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When, I think it was Counselor McFauler that came in front of us four years ago, it was a 6-3 vote, is that sound about right?
Sound vote right, yeah.
What was the stipulation of why those six didn't want to go with it? What was going on at that time that why they...
You'd have to ask the six.
I don't know, were you present?
Was I there?
Present?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But I couldn't tell you why, I just think they just voted against it.
Okay. I'm just trying to do a correlation, and four years later, it resurfaced in this, but I think, I'm trying to ask if the packaging was there, if, you know, talking a little bit offline with Counselor McCarthy next door here, is it possible to get the list of those 26 businesses? And we can kind of look at
Absolutely.
Which ones are kind of sufficient, which ones kind of pawn a red flag from what you're thinking of, you know, and if we have to exclude somebody because it just doesn't seem like it's a legitimate gas station or whatever, we have to exclude them. So I don't know, and that's something we should probably look into a little bit more. But overall, I think with the packaging, I mean, is there, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, is there going to be a public input for this as well?
It's later this evening.
Later this evening, okay. I'd probably like to hear from what they say, you know, I'd like to go off of what the public says, and if they have concerns or pros and cons, I'd usually, I like to weigh in on what they think. They're the ones that are here, so I want to hear from them, so, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. And just to clarify as well, it is a little bit between the two of you, with the legal language that's written here, anybody who wants it, regardless of their past history in the city, they do still have to go in front of you
Yes.
Before they proceed, and they could have years and decades here where they've had a clean record, or they've had incidences, and they've gone a couple years regardless, they do still have to come in front of the department before anything can be issued. So just, I want to clarify that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Next, we have Jim Tinnan, who's a solicitor for the city. And Mr. Tinnan, just to let you know, we are getting close to the double time, and so if you go over, I'll just break this portion, go into the public hearing, and we'll come back and we can do this part of the thing.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Counselor Liang consulted with me shortly after the ordinance was submitted to the body, and we discussed a couple of issues, I'll just touch on. One, she asked whether there were any zoning implications or issues like that, and there's somewhat of a change of views to mention to this, but were the body to vote this in, I don't think that, and I've talked to Jay Duper about it, it may not trigger a zoning review, because one of the things we're going to try to do, and it will be part of the process of vetting this particular ordinance, and some additions to it, which I've discussed with Counselor Liang, is looking at the size of the lot that is involved, like if there's a, there are a few service stations, I won't mention particulars, but we all know the service stations in our own neighborhoods, and, you know, there are some where they simply wouldn't have the space to add something like this. You have to look just broadly at public safety, whether someone parking and walking across the lot to get inside and access the food would be endangered by the way the lot sets up for the vehicles, because I know a lot of the service stations now will only allow their own employees to drive vehicles in the garage areas and in and out of the garage, and the public is allowing the pump area to drive their own vehicle, and that's it. So we talked about lot size, lot location, something similar to the public needs standard in alcohol licensing. There's a question that's asked of a license board, whether the public need is adequate to serve by the existing licenses. So if you're in a particular neighborhood where they have convenience stores, and we have some 24/7 ones now, then perhaps the, you know, the thought would be that the public needs adequate to serve, so that you don't need to add this to, you know, add a new service station to the list of providers. So those are some of the issues that I spoke with Counselor Liang. She wanted to get them out on the floor tonight, and as Counselor DeBona said, I think the real key here is to listen to the proprietors. I do think there's been a little change. You asked about what happened back a few years, when Counselor McFaul, a few years back when Counselor McFaul introduced it. There's a little bit of a change in the perception of what's going on in the city, and there are a couple of stations that have come online that, you know, they have bigger space available, or bigger space availability, and so the notion of entertaining it again, you know, is one that I think is appropriate. I know there's an appetite on the part of the vendors, the audience, because, you know, part of what's happening in the city is you have supermarkets and other large, you know, retail businesses that are not in the gas business four, five, six years ago, but are today, and that's impacting the gas revenue of these smaller proprietors who've been in the business, you know, by design. So there are different dynamics like that that have shifted the marketplace in Quincy, and I know when I was talking to Counselor Liang, I was one of the chief site, that some of the gas stations are seeing a drop in revenue of typical revenue sources like the gas at the pump, and looking to make it up. So those are some of the issues that we talked about, and I think for the most part, they can be handled by maybe putting some language into the ordinance, which I'm happy to craft as we move forward, that invites like board health regulations and other things that are reviewed by people such as Mr. Shealy and his staff, or Mr. Duper and his team. The one other issue was making certain that the license board did not become over encumbered. The one other issue was making certain that the license board did not become over encumbered by problems from this. So I talked with Madam Clark about that point because they do the alcohol enforcement in the city. But for them to be going out and reviewing what's going on and whether there's compliance with the food component of a, a gas or service station business, that's not something that we can shift, I don't think, fairly to the license board. So that's the only, I think I covered most of the points that you and I have discussed previously, Counselor Liang. I know that, I spoke with the mayor at night about this and he has thoughts that he'll be happy to share in the future as well. But like Counselor DeBonis, I think the folks to hear from really are the people in the industry.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timmons. And I, I don't want to cut you off in case my colleagues have questions for you, but I do want to just keep in mind that we had a public hearing scheduled through some forty-five. So at this point, I'll recess the ordinance committee meeting, open it up to the public hearing, and then we can come back to this matter. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. I would like to call to order the one to April fourth, seven forty-five P.M. public hearing on Council Board two thousand eighteen dash zero three seven. All right, and I will open the floor to hold a comment in favor or opposition of those wishing to speak in favor. Please come on. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
You said an address?
Yes, please.
Hi, folks. My name is Will Staudt. I'm an employee of Speedway. My address is thirty-six Hill Street, Oakdale Road. We're hoping that this will pass. Bringing prepackaged food into the store will hopefully provide larger bonuses for our employees and make revenues sufficient, allows us to hire some additional staff members. Some of the concerns that were raised are things that already apply to every other street store that we operate. I think this is the only store that we have customers walking in through out requesting snacks and we just can't provide them. We do have a few vending machines, but they only offer produce. So the, the folks are already walking inside, pay for their gas and to ask for these products. So as far as customer safety, I don't think it's going to change that. They're already walking inside. As far as storage, we already have practices to keep it separate from any automotive products or other carcinogens or cleaning products. They're stored in their own separate shelving. They're stored six inches off the floor. As far as backstop goes, as you was talking about, excessive backstop again, we, we deliver it to really just restocking and shoving. We don't want to wear out this product. We just want to have something available for customers.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is... My address is six-six-four Hill Street, Oakdale Road. So my gas station, I did it like about two, one year ago, self-service, full of relation, my gas was sold from the city. So the reason, like, the gas price dropped down, we don't take money in the gas, and I know every city, they have like the self-service gas station or something, they're selling gas soda, chips, snack, soda, stuff like this. I know how long it's that you have to put like in the vending machine, I drive, like just someone I walk in. So when he see the soda or the, and stuff like this, or something in the vending machine, they get this and they... So thank you, but not...
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Yes. Again, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nicholas Cola, three twenty-eight Gulf Road, Dartford, Mass. I'm here on behalf of Speedway as well. I just wanted to add that all of our managers are certified, served, safe, certified, and allergy awareness certified every single year. So I know we're discussing prepackaged foods, but food service programs also, we have the capability of doing it. We'd like to do it if customers want it, they ask us about it. And we have internal auditors going once a month to check our food safety compliance and all applications. I think we're a good fit if customers want it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Counselor Good evening, thank you. My name is Christopher Hafferton. I live at one twenty-seven Prospect Avenue in Wallston, and I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. As many of you know, this proposal came up several years ago, was considered, and it was not passed. At that time, I didn't come to that area to speak in favor. I thought that it was frankly so easy to say yes to it that I didn't think I needed to be here. And I was kind of surprised to hear that it didn't pass that time, so I wanted to give my opinion this time. One of the, I think, the main reason why I think we should change this is we should be a more business friendly city, and I think that we're not in this respect. You can go everywhere, anywhere in New England, anywhere on the East Coast, anywhere in this country. There are gas station vending lots everywhere. There are in Milton, Grand Tree, Weymouth. They're every year, everywhere in New England now. And I think when you look at our existing ordinance, and it starts off with, you know, in the industry of public health, safety, and welfare, no petroleum business is allowed to engage in selling food. I just think that that simply isn't true anymore. These types of businesses are everywhere. People are not getting sick from gas station food all over the country. Self-service gas stations that sell food are not exploding everywhere all over the country. They're, they're clearly sick, and they could clearly be regulated to work well. One of my clients owns the gas station on Washington Street, Quincy Point. This is very important for him. These small local gas stations are under a lot of pressure from places like BJ's Gas and Stop &amp; Shop. They put a ton of pressure on their own gas business. Being able to add, you know, bottled water, Coke, Pepsi, Brinol, Candelots, things like that, makes a lot of sense for them and it will help them to be profitable. The other point I'd like to make is that this really isn't that big of a change. Gas stations do sell food. They can, as long as it's in a vending machine. And I think that's a little silly to require someone that they have to have a candy bar in a vending machine that they have right there on the shelf in front of the cashier is the same thing. This is a, this is a food inspection, a food establishment inspection report that was hanging on the wall of my client's office down on Washington Street. And it's filled out by, you know, one of the inspectors from our health department. And the boxes for food service and retail are both checked off on the type of operation. He owns a gas station. So our health department is going to gas stations and inspecting them and looking for as food service and retail.
Could you ask the speaker, who's here on behalf of, I was going to be a question you speaking, as opposed to the resident who's brought us to...
Why?
Could we ask the speaker?
Yeah.
Yes, I was just trying to make sure what you might hear inside.
My, my, my client is Nick Taylor, owns a gas station on Washington Street, Quincy Point. Go on, thank you. So I think, I, I just think it's, it's time to make this change. I think it's a common sense change. It's a, it's a business friendly amendment, and I think it's frankly a little bit ridiculous that we can't have a type of business in our city that's just so common everywhere else in our country.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Again, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Tom Carroll, Biden Road, Quincy. I got, I don't own a gas station or a store, but some of my friends who are here, and they were, we were talking one day, and I never realized that this was an ordinance in Quincy. So when they told me this was tonight, I figured I'd have to come and just say whatever relief we can give to them. I think we should. A friend of mine asked me if I would read a letter and then I'll submit it. It's from James Kucinata, the owner of Adams Variety. He says, "I'm writing to support the purchase of convenience store items at gas stations in the city of Quincy. As a lifelong resident of Quincy and a variety store almost over thirty years, from my standpoint, I feel strongly that convenience store gas stations are advantageous in the city. New trends show that convenience stores are growing in numbers, and it's only fair for gas stations to join this growth trend. Consumers deserve the opportunity to get convenience store items at gas stations when they get gas for their vehicles. Thank you for your attention, Miss Madison Sealy. James Kucinata, owner of Adams Variety." Can I?
Yes, please. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Who's speaking in favor?
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Old Zuma, from twelve sixty-nine Front Street Parkway. So just basically, just wanted to add to what they're saying. From a customer point of view, they come in and they feel like they're not treated fairly, they get upset, they have to use their credit cards, and, you know, vending machines won't pay credit cards. And it's just a hassle for them. So the minute they see a vending machine, they turn around, they leave. I mean, it's affecting our sales, it's affecting the gas sales, and it's just, it's a tough position that we're in because, you know, we can't really afford to keep going, paying the taxes, paying everything that we have to pay, you know, expensive, expensive wise. So that's basically, I mean, we're, we're hoping that it passes.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to switch over now. If anyone would like to speak, speak in opposition. Please. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Karen Norton-Malaney, two oh three West Gland Street. My husband Jim and I have owned this store for over twenty-five years. Sounds like a long time. It is. Times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, comes to over nine thousand days of continuous operation. We're happy, we raise three kids. But when Stop &amp; Shop got the bear in line, took a big hit, then opened up the floodgates. Now there's so many stores that have bear in line. In the last three years with the minimum wage hikes, we've lost thirty thousand dollars. Our taxes are going up, the fees are going up, our insurance is going up. We pay twenty-four hundred dollars a month for three people, myself, my husband, and my son who works for us. We're grateful to have the lottery, we couldn't survive without it. But the workload has quadrupled with no increase in revenue, or I should say commission there. It, it is a wealthy neighborhood, so we try to keep our prices low, but it's getting hotter and hotter. I can understand, you know, the gas station's point of view, but they have to appreciate our point of view also.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? One more time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, if there are those not wanting to speak or want their audience knowing, you can do so by signing the sheets that are in the back of the room. So at this point, we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting at seven fifty-eight P.M. and we will reopen the ordinance committee meeting. Mr. Timmons, if you could just come back up, I know we just wrapped up it, and I have all these questions for you. Counselor?
I don't know if this is pertaining to Mr. Timmons, but maybe he can answer it. Four years ago, when they came in front of, so it was Counselor McFaul that came in front, so he was in support of it. Is that correct? He, he brought the resolution ordinance change to the table, right?
I know he introduced it, yes.
So he would be in favor of it, is that correct?
I'm not certain. I mean, if a counsel could introduce something because someone asked them to...
But doesn't necessarily mean they were...
Right, exactly.
Maybe I should have asked Mrs. Manning before the meeting that where the votes went. But anyways, long story short is, four years ago, someone was speaking about, this is really good because at school committee, you couldn't, you couldn't kind of cross-examine or talk about what some of the people came up for open enrollment to say, or open form would say, but it's a little bit different here. Somebody had mentioned, so four years ago, was Stop &amp; Shop gas station open and was BJ's gas station open four years ago? Because, you know, they come in and they, they have incentive programs for their gas stations. I mean, Stop &amp; Shop, as much as a hundred points equals ten cents off the gallon. I mean, you, you could go in there and, I know my colleague next door here visits Stop &amp; Shop four days a week, probably spends about a thousand dollars, so that's a, that's a dollar off the gas for gallon. But that's a huge incentive, and if you're a BJ's member, BJ's adds a, you know, a BJ member, you get like, you know, I don't know, like eight cents off the gallon, and that's a huge incentive to compete with some of the other gas stations out there. So I think those two came online right around the three, four, five year mark, I believe. I don't have a date like this, but that may be the difference of how this is. But you talk about the packaging. Zen Stop &amp; Shop, I'm talking to a couple of employees, and they were just saying that as the population is growing in the city of Quincy, that they're getting a lot of people inside the Stop &amp; Shops and the food, the supermarkets. I mean, it's a lot more people inside the supermarkets, so sometimes it's a little more convenient. Will they be able to buy like milk, like packaged milk, like a gallon of milk? Would they be able to buy bread if someone was to... A bread, a bread, bread?
You mean the gas station?
Yeah, the gas stations.
Yeah, I would imagine.
So they would be able to sell milk and bread and those type of...
Those are prepackaged.
Those are prepackaged, so...
And the ordinance specifically addresses dairy.
Dairy, okay, okay. Because sometimes it's, a supermarket's whole motto is to put those in the back of the store. So you have to go through all the other items to get to the back of the store to get the milk and the bread and all those other things. And that's strategically how a supermarket's set up. But some people, they're on the run, they want to be able to talk about getting chips and all these other little items. It'd just be more convenient when you go and you get your gas. But I mean, I've heard from the people tonight, and I, I feel for this woman that spoke a little earlier about her, her business. I know all about being a small business owner and getting sweeps, you know? But we'll look a little bit more into this, I think. Talk a little bit more with Drew about what, what twenty-six places have this in place, and we'll figure this out. But I don't know if there's anything that's going to be spoken about. I know Counselor Pamucci just showed up here, so maybe he has something to say. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Anybody else have anything? Okay, so I do, just before we wrap up, I do want to point out, because I know this was brought up a couple of times tonight, that this was brought before the councilors years ago. And the difference in just looking at that language in this one as opposed to today is very specifically the prepackaged term in there. Again, when I went and spoke to Mr. Shearly, that that was an important piece to me because we did not put that in there. It does open up the possibility for these, for these stations essentially to go full food service, which does entail a lot more of the licensing requirements and health, safety requirements as well. So that is a significant difference that we're making here. But there were some other great points that were brought up this evening that I do want to go back and take a look at, again, to strip away some of the staff departments, storage departments, inventory requirements. And between Mr. Shearly and Mr. Timmons, if we could draw some language to make sure that that gets covered in here for safety purposes, I would like some interest for that offline as well after this evening. So we, we will not be running this tonight because there are some amendments that we want to look at and obviously consider the folks that took the time to come out and speak. I wanted to put that in consideration as well in speaking to my colleagues throughout that, you know, again, this is important because I think as the language is written right now, it is prohibitive to a lot of folks. And I, while we personally, I also have to go back to my colleagues here, certainly don't want to be in the business of telling people how to run their business, I also too don't think that we should, you know, create languages that would be prohibitive for people as... offline as well after this evening. So we um we will not be going on this tonight because there are some amendments that we want to look at and obviously consider the folks that took the time to come out and speak. Um I want to take that into consideration as well, and so to my colleagues throughout that, you know, again, this is important because I think as the language is written right now, it is prohibitive to among the folks. And I, while we personally want to go back to my colleagues here, certainly don't want to be in the business and telling people how to run their business, I also too don't believe um that we should, you know, create languages and be prohibitive for people as well. So I want to make sure that I'm moving forward with this carefully and respectfully of everyone in this industry that will be affected by it. So I know the remaining committees that we can make these changes for these amendments as well, um and we will come back and revisit it when we get to final language. So at this point, I will recess the ordinance committee meeting at April four P M. Um thank you again to all those that came up to speak.